So I'm sorry about being late here. So it's technical difficulties, but I'd like to call to order the school committee business meeting. On August sixth, starting at twelve seventeen. All right. So to begin our meeting, I'm gonna ask if we have any public comments online. We don't have, or we have any public comments in person? So please just raise your hand online or put in the chat your name and address if you have any comments for today. All right, not seen any, we will move on. And my chairman's report for today, I do not have a new report for today. So we'll skip to our next agenda, which is our consent agenda and the acceptance of warrants. Exactly, Michelle, just remind me how I'm. Reading these.
Oh, it's a good question.
Yeah.
I think we just go voucher numbers. I'll tell you what we usually say, yes, is. What people prove invented to include the warrant for vouchers. And eighty-nine.
So I'll. Make a motion to accept the warrants. Voucher. One zero eight now through one zero nine one, and then also voucher one oh oh five, one oh six, and one oh seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All right, then a quick show of hands. Or acceptance? All in favor? Oh, in the minutes, I'm sorry. In the minutes from. What's your four? And then accepting some of the bits from Jim. Okay, second, right, and then all in favor? That's seen animals. Moving on. Donations from that what's anyone's here?
Have any questions?
So I'll make a motion to accept the donations. Discussion or any questions?
Can we just start to find for the record what the donations are?
Sure. So Memphis Red Six Boosters and Grand Art Clubs offer to donate combined total of eight thousand dollars towards the Department's. All subscription renewal, so the boosters is offering six thousand dollars and a grand click two thousand dollars. So. We are simply requesting, yeah, we are very much in approval of this, and of course, we are very grateful for their continued support of both organizations. So any questions at all? These are pretty. Starting out, so. So the second one here is to replace the championship banners in the high school. And. I think everyone. It's an anonymous donation, okay?
And I think it's worth noting, they went to three vendors and found them most affordable.
I'm just trying to condense those things. So again, any questions or any comments?
It's great news. Thank you very much. And donors.
All right, then we will. Take a vote, all in favor? See that this again? And so moving on to subcommittee reports, elementary facilities.
We're bored.
Sure.
We're bored. I don't know that we had a motion or a second on that. We did, we did, yeah, okay, second. Who made the move? So, thank you.
So elementary facilities, Teresa, John, did you guys meet at all, and is there any meaningful update for today outside of?
Coming up.
Uh, fighters committee.
The up to play where we are.
Yeah, you're super. Fighters subcommittee and Jake.
We have now.
Uh, policy. Teresa.
We have not met, but there's three of us, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Negotiations, Kate and I, we did not meet. And moving on to super.
It goes up quickly, we'll put it up if it doesn't. All right, just very simply. We need to do these things earlier, just a little bit of an outlook as to where we're going. And things we're preparing for this summer as we think about the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We do have. System-wide evaluation from the ongoing topic, trying to know we have three concurrent system-wide evaluations going on next year. We've got a coordinated program review, that's a tends to be a compliance-driven special education, title line, and other mandated responsibilities come under review for process compliance. We are going to. Think our. Two point five year on the NEAS accreditation process. Self-study is coming to a conclusion and we'll be lining up for. A visit sometime over the next year or so. This process, like I mentioned before, if anyone's interested in the final product, we have a posted document from the process that went through at the high school. We finished our decennial review. Two years ago, so. This is a combination of self-study against a set of standards, and the goal is to have the elementary schools. Not only accredited but aligned according to these standards, which is reflective of. Department of Education responsibilities as well, so that's ongoing. And in accordance with outlined in our strategic plan. And then we also were, I think I've mentioned this in the meeting, they're invited into the Department of Education's whole district review process. And that we're having our onboarding meetings coming up, wanting this week to kind of get an overview of the program. And then another specific school specific meeting later in August, and we'll be prepared to begin self-studying document gathering for that, that's something to fall. So there's a lot of work being done. In the service of learning about where we stand against objective standards. As well as getting some clues to where we can move and get that. So looking forward to those informing our district improvement plan goals for their three-year update. We're entering the third year, we had the district improvement plan update at the end of last year at our June meeting. We're on our third year, and the third year typically involves data gathering and outside evaluation to inform where we should put our energies. Into the next three years, so things are tying together. Only good, I'm not sure we'll have all of the results in time to inform, but we can get, I'm certain we'll have a sense of things. As we start to build our goals for the next few years. The leadership team focus, we've met in three different workshops over the summer. We are working on improving our skills around observing and analyzing teaching, we have new members and older veteran members, veteran members of our team. So I think this is going to be a good exercise for us this year to continue to be in classrooms together as a team and. Formalize a unified approach to how we're looking at and reporting. On teaching in the classroom with the eye on improving student achievement ultimately. So we're excited about that, that's going to be, we're to partner with Research for Better Teaching. To tutor us through that process throughout the year. My goal, it was in my goals, library task force, got the outline, I'll be ready to launch that and have a call for participants in the fall newsletter. We were very generous in supporting a slightly higher budget than I recommended last year, which ensured that we were able to bring on. A TA for the elementary and the middle high school libraries, so we at least have coverage in the library. Each, each library will now have a person in it each day of the week to maintain the space and create accessibility. You know, our work this year will be to try and begin to craft a vision for libraries, I've been. You, you've been good at bringing forward the community interest in. Having the library staff, and I think you've been good at hearing that want to staff it, but we don't want to staff it like at nineteen eighty-five, we want to staff it for the future, so I think. Reimagining and defining what the role, what role the library will play and the person who runs that center, what, what their job will be, will be an important part of the task. So we want to build from the future, we don't want to just replace something that's perceived loss from the past. So that will be work we're doing, and we're continuing with our arts council work, which should continue to inform our direction on. Of how we build our arts program out. In a mindful way, in a way that's resource smart and strive to offer. Offer more programming kids going forward, so I think we're not quite certain how that will unfold, but we're looking forward to the results of some of the work that's been done. Over the past year to conform that process, health advisory committee is underway. That's another area that we'll be looking forward to build out, which we have. Some divine standards mission. Before us, and the middle high school scheduled study is going to continue this year. I think what we learned out of last year process is that it was, it was fast and initiated in response to solve a financial problem, but what they found. They found a lot of opportunities in the outcome, but also some problems, and they didn't quite have the solutions to the problems yet. And I think they want to go to work on trying to do some problem solving around the pieces that were not acceptable in the, in the iteration that they had defined an option that will work to serve their. What they see is opportunities for programming and cross-school cooperation. While at the same time maintaining the things that we think are valuable and important enough for that, so I think look for more continued work there. On September third, we built in, if you look at the calendar, every first Monday of the month throughout the year, we could equip a date, so we can give you an update on. What happened over the summer and what our outlook invokes will be for the year, we're also going to start September with the school improvement plans. Updates and those updates will. They're both, here's what we accomplished last year, and here's what's on deck for the year ahead, so September will set the stage for the, for what you'll see going on in curriculum. Some couple of fun updates over the summer, we are organizing, this is on the slide, but. The middle high school is new, but it's not new new, so we're struggling to find. A lot of the small spaces, small group spaces and flexible spaces that exist in this newest building that we have. So our ACE program is expanding and we are going through. The patient, Julie Patient is going through another redesign of the office suite, we've redesigned that now twice since the building opened. To create learning spaces where there was once office space. And they're, they're almost finished with the, with the next iteration of that, it should provide more classroom space for the ACE program, which is multi-age. And is a high ratio of adults to students, so they just need a little bit more elbow room, so we, they replanted an office out of the high school suite and broke down a wall, so now. Now they have a little bit more legroom for the program and. Well, I think we're going to find that this is going to be a theme as we go through the years that we have, our classrooms are relatively small, and we don't have a lot of spaces for our smaller programs, so. The team was really collaborative and came up with some creative ideas, I think we're going to have to work really hard in the future to find even more. So just something on the radar screen, I know our focus is on Essex Elementary in terms of the facility, but it's a facility that's starting to show. It was open just before attention to really a high level of attention to safety design, so we're always. Trying to work around things there in terms of sight lines and design of front entry and the implementation of our new Raptor program, which is swipe ID for your license. We can't quite figure out how that's going to play in the high school because we don't have a vested rule which contains people in which you can hold them until they pass, so. We are going to start to hear us talk a little bit more about the facility, what some of the facility needs are beyond just cosmetic, there's, we're going to start to see some structural problems, I think. Technology infrastructure is regularly updated to the extent that we can, we just did a full upgrade of all of the. They're not Promethean boards, but Promethean-like boards at the high school, we. We've had the original to the building. Smart, kind of, it was a flat panel smart board, that was a whiteboard that created the projection. So we had a projector in the whiteboard, those systems have been retired, we've been able to install in all the rooms. New updated boards, and we're also going through our cyclical upgrade of teacher laptops, so those are some of the facilities oriented things that are going on. But I think we are starting to see some things at the high school, middle school that will need attention when we hit the half-year mark in terms of structures. That's it for that, and the other exciting news. The extended learning program has run out of special ed, they had a really strong summer, and our PV, if you're curious, in our workshop is we are starting to talk. Similar to how we undertook our journey for cultural competency, we're starting to build our capacity around understanding AI and the potential implications on schooling, and we all carry in our knowledge of our own. Our own world and our own usage. But it's an area, even when talking with our attorneys around whether or not we should be more proactive around policy. And working with, with a trainer to kind of help us understand what some of the tensions are at school, it's kind of a explore and go, go slow but be mindful approach, and I think. The academic integrity avenue that they've taken at the high school is the one that's being promoted as the settlement one right now. So there's a lot of questions, but not a lot of definitive answers of what we should be doing. But we're trying to build relationships with other schools who may be a little bit ahead of us and learn from them, so that I would say is a work in progress, and we got our annual briefing on school.
Question? Maybe a question might be more for Heather about the AI, it's also on my list, but. The, so one of the things I've noticed just having kids go through high school is that the journaling, which used to exist on a weekly basis, and so I saw my, my son who's now in college, I saw him do that. Every week for four years, and I know that my rise in junior middle and grade outside, so I think my understanding is that's a response to AI. But I'm wondering if there's been consideration to how, because my, my personal perspective was that was a huge change in my son's writing. The one who actually had to do this journaling, which is a really small amount, just so you guys know, like, it starts off with like a paragraph or two, but by the time they're seniors, they're doing a lot more, so I really did see that it was a huge benefit, and. I'm curious if there's any thought for how to approach that, understanding that AI obviously is a huge challenge, I know some schools have found a handwritten journal, for instance.
So we don't go down the rabbit hole, because I think we could be here all, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to get our hand along, which is. How do you not need your reaction, react and stop it and go old school? How do we not become the AI police where we're running everything through a scanner? And build capacity for both our staff. To accept the reality of what it is and how it may need to be used, to build the student's capacity about how and when it is appropriate to use it and what we need, so we're kind of in that, not sure which direction to go. I do think you're right, it is, it's a reaction, what's going on, but I don't think we have any answers, but stay tuned, I think you'll be hearing updates on this throughout.
Just as awareness, we probably know already, Desi is putting together passports.
Yeah, they wouldn't take us.
Yeah, they, it's a pretty small group, but just they're, they're trying to do like the landscape analysis of.
We know. We were hoping to be there on the eighth, which is Thursday, but we got our, sorry to inform you, we don't want any of the. But yeah, we're looking. Yeah, we're looking for opportunities to grow our understanding.
We, at Student Advisory, at some point last year, had a really robust conversation about the journaling and the impact of AI on, on that, and there weren't solutions, again, well, the kids, actually, the students had lots of ideas, but. But they echoed what you said, that it was really impactful as well.
Yeah, and it's, I need to just. I think we'll, we'll get there, but my, my concern is like for the current group of students, how do we continue to advance our writing skills until we have. A place where we understand the impact of work out better to regulate the AI component. Because I think right now, we're kind of at that, like, because we're waiting and seeing this group of students. Didn't do as much writing, which I, I get, I get that it's super complicated, but I'd love to see. I know they worked on their academic integrity part, academic integrity. Policy last year, it hopes to reignite interest in expanding, so I think these are good questions for Julie to, I know she's working on that issue on the day today. I don't want to make guesses at things, I'd rather introduce her to the conversation. And then just my closes on the Essex building project, we have, there's progress being made, but not. There isn't anything really visible about it, like I had reported a little bit earlier, we're awaiting our enrollment letter and. And final report to be used at our meeting on the twenty-first, so if you are free on the twenty-first, you might want to try to make it either online or in person to the meeting. How, I went back and looked at the notes from Moscow around, and we had the enrollment report, it gets brought to the school building committee for acceptance. And then we move forward in feasibility study, so. I, we did have some success, and this is the letter, the letter we're waiting on, on making the case that we should be looking that we could in feasibility. I'll say responsibly, without it blowing up the scope of feasibility too much. Look at not only what we applied for under the statement of interest, which was a remedy for Essex Elementary and its students. And according to the plan we had in place for many years was a replacement of that school, so that's how we were accepted in. They are understanding now that we have had some question about whether or not this building could manage all of the students and whether it would be potential. A potential site for consideration, I think we're going to get that written into the letter. As well as looking at splitting up Essex Elementary into two segments and leaving. Free cake. Two or three in Essex and moving four and five here. So when we, we will have those documents to present to the SBC for consideration and acceptance at the twenty-first. Again, please come to the meeting, and the only other piece we need to finish out of eligibility will be the outreach, it's a maintenance report, and that is a work in progress, and will be done within the next week or two, and then. When we have everything submitted, and if SBC accepts the enrollment report and. Accompany letter, then we'll be in the queue, we're going before the board to formally move into. The multi-year feasibility plan and putting the team together, it's the first step, so exciting, it's moving. That's all I've got. Just.
All right, thank you. Do we have a quick, like, budget update, or we?
Anything you want to share?
Yeah, if there's anything, yeah, which is.
Not really, we're just, we're kicking off FY twenty-five at the current time, you will receive quarterly reports once we really get into the thick of things, and. That's right, but yeah, right around the corner, we'll be starting our FY twenty-six budget, so. There's not a lot of time to dissect and absorb it, but things are going really well.
All right, excellent, thank you.
I've had outreach from Essex in hopes of getting together the chairs, so I've given them two, two times, I'm not sure where we landed, I didn't see the latest, so we're either meeting eight thirty. On Thursday morning or naming time next on the twenty-first, to just check in and see what thoughts are, what the thought process is for FY twenty-six. Is other than that, it's just been. Michelle's been doing a lot of digging and organizing and. It's great.
Just prepared, we say getting to get to the chairs.
Or selectmen and school committee?
Yeah, so that's a request for myself and. The shares of each town. Pam and Michelle and two business workers. So. Talk. Not sure exactly what that means, it was very, very broad, but talk.
That's great to start.
Yeah. So, thank you, with that, is there any additional school committee comments? Real quick, thank you everyone for taking all the time today, in our workshop earlier, well, I think at this point, we are good to exit our business meeting.
It's all major.
Sure.
The school committee. Nine with our PDM, like you mentioned, that we're going to have quarterly reports, but this committee calendar, it only has the first BTA update in November, and then nothing else, so I don't know if. We want to include all the lovely proposals in the agenda.
Yeah, when you feel like you found the dates, we'll plug them.
We, we, we need to get into the cash reconciliation project process, because I really want to include that as part of the quarterly report, so that might. Might be the one.
So yes, they'll be added to the calendar as soon as she can project the dates that she'll have.
Yes.
All right, great. Anyone else? All right, so with that, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Back to our. Back to our. For fifteen minutes back to our summer workshop. All those. Second. All those in favor? All right, that's the end of this. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of this.